All right, so we're gonna go ahead and call the order, call to order the planning commission meeting for June 16th, 2022 at 6:30. And we will rise for collective allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, since all of our commissioners are not in the room, we have one joining us online. We're gonna go to Angela for a roll call vote, or a poll call vote.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Here.
Mr. Wolfies? Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Loman?
Here.
And Mr. Journey did call me, she would be out, so it's excused.
All right, well, this is the portion of our meeting for public comment. This is in regards to anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. If you've got any business that you'd like to bring before the planning commission that we are not planning on talking about, this would be the time if you wanted to come forward. As there is none, we will move on. Oh, yes. Can you come forward?
You have to come up.
Yeah, we, we gotta get you on the recording, so.
And also, if you don't mind signing in when you get done, sign in at the planning sheet.
Yep. Just have a seat right there and just state your name and address.
John Morano, 27690 Riggs Hill Road, Foster. First off, I'd like to ask Mrs. Melcher, what do you do for a living? Okay, so you don't find that a conflict of interest being on the planning commission?
In what way?
Well, you sell real estate. I mean, you're in it to make money.
Maybe down the road, if they do, helps like I may. I mean, I can't predict that I would at any time make a profit or profit off any end of that. I might also suggest that any developments that's been in the city kind of in our bank. Everybody, our system.
And I might, I might mention too, that having her on the panel also helps us keep in mind current market trends, things that are working.
Oh yeah, I heard that, I, I heard that too when, when. Anyway. This development on 43rd kind of mirrors the one behind O and M. Now, I get no problem with the construction and the way the houses look. I got a major problem with where they're at and how close together they are. It's like, are you kidding me? Six lots to an acre?
Sir, these, first of all, the, that zone for where behind O and M, it's in the, the R3 zone, which allows for pretty small lots, 5,000 square feet. The one that we're talking about tonight, which will be discussed later, is in a different zone and has a minimum of 8,000 square feet. So they're, they're very much not the same when it comes to the size of the lots.
Well, okay. So we won't even discuss the 43rd because you said that's on, that's another deal.
It comes up next on the agenda.
Right, okay, so let's talk about these back here. I can't believe that you would allow somebody to shoehorn that many houses into that area. It just, so somehow the plans, some, somebody made the decision that that was perfectly okay.
I'll keep, keep, keep in mind that that did come before the planning commission and we did discuss it to some extent. So it wasn't, it wasn't just done as a backdoor deal, which is kind of what you're suggesting. It did come before the planning, planning commission. We discussed it in extent and because of its zone is what allowed it to be the way it is.
What about up on 10th Street? There was a park there now, said I know there's houses where the parking was supposed to be. Now, we get, I could.
I'd be happy to talk with you about individual applications and, and what the history of it is.
I've come down and talked to different people here and I get the same, I get the same story all the time. It's like, well, Portland dictates what we do here, you know?
I've never said that to anyone, but.
Well, you or your assistant, somebody who works in a, are you?
I, I'm, I'm the community and economic development director, so I supervise the planning staff.
I talked to the city planner and his, his assistant, I got the same story. It's like these four, the fourplexes up here by the market, by the Foster Lake Market. Where are they gonna park?
They're required to have two on street, two off-street parking spaces for each unit. And so they're.
Off-street?
Mm-hmm. They're off-street as in they have their own driveway, they have their own garages that they will have to have enough space for each unit to park in. That's all in the code and those provisions were put in that code close to 20 years ago. It's been that way for, for quite a long time, it's been there. So the fact that it's being developed now, it still has to follow those same rules that were put in place. We are about to have a modified code examined and we've been going through that process the whole last year, all with public meetings, begging for public input. And so we certainly appreciate and value the input, we just haven't really gotten any.
Well, about the only thing that I see that's halfway decent is, is the apartments over here. They're well-built, there's actually some space there. The ones that are shoehorned there, okay, right over here behind South Fork Trading, those apartments, I mean, they just crammed right in there next to storage units, then the ones down there by the fire, fire department, just crammed in, you know, next to a business and whatever. It's like, don't we have certain places that are residential and certain places that are business? And I've gotten flack from, from the county about setbacks. There's places all around here that don't follow, don't meet 30-foot setbacks.
We don't have 30-foot setbacks in the city. So are, with any flack that you've gotten from the county, that would be for property outside the city, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do, I, I'm outside the city.
Okay.
But I have lived in the city and it was funny. I lived right on 18th Street and right behind my house was Ames Creek. There was a bunch of Russian stuff like that, so. Anyway, it was unusable property and the city had no access to it. So all of a sudden, I get a sign stuck up there, it says state wetlands. And it was like the wetlands because over on Ashbury Development, they had about 15 lots they couldn't sell because it was zoned wetlands. All of a sudden, that became dry and it was wetlands behind my house and stuff. And I've seen that kind of stuff going on all the time. And it's like, oh, we don't know, you know, but somebody knows, somebody pulls this kind of stuff. The, the buildings up on 10th Street, the senior housing, I went to that meeting. The broker, the builder, the city streets were in, the power was in, the ground was broken and they were having a meeting to see whether we were gonna, what, what the community thought. And two or three of the people brought the statutes out. This was zoned S4, single-family dwelling residential. And when he read that, I don't, and this was a long time ago, but it's just a pattern that I see constantly. The guy that was running the show ran him off because he didn't like what he was saying, he didn't agree with him. And so he was just run off and I'm sitting there. And I asked the question, I go, who are those people back there? I go, isn't that the developer and the realtor and the contractor? I says, why are we having this dog and pony show here? Because you've already got all the stuff.
Was that here in Sweet Home?
Yeah.
What is the, because we don't have an S4 zone. So I'm confused as to.
Obviously, the guy, the guy pulled it out, it's up on 10th Street or up on the avenues.
Okay.
Go up 18th, turn up Mountain View and then the first street, whatever that is up there, Elm or Maple or whatever.
We, we do the best we can to make sure that, that city code is followed. And a lot of times, especially with, you know, the apartments downtown, it may look like it's crammed in there, but it's, it's gone through a process to make sure there's enough room for fire life safety and room for the residents that are in there. And that's what it's, it's zoned for, development that is mixed with commercial in that, in that particular zone. You can do that. So those are all in codes and those are put in, have been put in place for quite a while. If you want, there is a process if you think they should be changed. Now, it helps to be a resident of the city, but if people want to have, want those to be changed, this, you know, asking the, the planning commission and the city council to, to look at reviewing those, that's certainly everybody's right and.
Obviously, one person, I mean, you can shine me on because you probably never see me again. I mean, I've come down here and talked, you know, mono a mono and I just get, you know, well, you know, there's one person. It would take a whole lot of people and there's not a, to be honest with you, there's not a lot of interest in this community to care. Nobody seems to care about anything except their own personal deal.
Well, I, I take personal offense to that.
Do you?
I, I honestly care, that's why we're here, we're all volunteers, none of us are paid. We take of our own time to come down here, sit through hours and hours of readings, redoing code, looking at people's applications, trying to work with them. It's not just to come down here, you know, dog and pony show, seal of approval and off you go. We refuse a lot of stuff. We have people come back time and time again. We're looking out for the future of Sweet Home, trying to clean up what has been done in the past through the good old boys' club. So if you want, there are regular seats available on planning commission. Leave your name and number and when one comes up, we can get ahold of you and you can be a part of this. You can see that we're not just doing this just as, as some kind of show of support, false support for our community. We care. A lot of people on this panel have lived here for years. A lot of us have businesses or have had businesses in this area. We care. I've lived here for 17 years, my kids, all four of them have gone completely through the Sweet Home School District. So don't, don't tell me that we're doing this.
See, this, this is another thing, I talked to the curriculum director, I mean, this is getting off the subject.
We, we can't talk about school district here, this is not our issue.
Anyway. Yeah, I'd leave my name.
Sure.
Yeah.
And where, where would that happen?
So back on that, there's a sign-in sheet back there, if you put your name and your address and everything on there, then I'll have it for record.
Yep.
So I don't want to cast dispersions on you and something like that, or, you know, personally. And I'm sorry if I offended you, but what I see going on, and it seems like it's gone on for, I've lived here for 20 years and I just see continually, perpetually going on and on and on. Now, if you guys are trying to change it, but I don't see that happening, you know, and I'm sorry, that's my opinion, you know? And it differs from yours, but it is what it is and we can agree to disagree. I'm not gonna, you know.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I actually welcome your passion and that's the kind of thing that helps drive us forward. Having differences of opinion, differences of economic background, differences in career on this panel is what helps us figure out what's best for Sweet Home in the future.
See, Sweet Home's, you know, Sweet, Oregon adds finest, okay? This got a lot going for this, a lot going for the town, but you know, and I, I know a lot of this stuff has nothing to do with you, but it's just, it's really weird. You drive down through town and I've even gone to, you know, these podunk towns in eastern Oregon. The garbage dump is not right in the middle of town and I know that was zoned a long time ago. But I mean, it's, it's stuff like that, that, you know, you, you just scratch your head and wonder, you know, a dump? Garbage dump right in the middle of town, you know, in a business district? I mean, that's just, you know, things like that. Or.
I, I, I think this is getting off the subject a lot, so I'd, I'd be happy to talk, I'm here every day. I'd be happy to sit down and hear all sorts of stuff.
You gotta deal with the 43rd and I'm sure there's people back there that are more, that are interested in that. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak and.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and seriously, do, do put your name and number down.
I will, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, if no one else has any public comment, we're gonna go ahead and look at our meeting minutes from the last two meetings, May 19th and June 20, June 2nd. Anybody have any changes, addendums, corrections?
No.
Can that be done in one motion or do we need to have separate?
Because Laura is online, we need to put separate.
Okay. So we'll target May 19th.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Mr. Melcher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
All right, so moving on to the June 2nd Planning Commission meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the meeting minutes, June 2nd. Go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Abstain, I was absent.
Mr. Wolfies?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
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 All right, so with that behind us, we will go on to our public hearing for application SD 22-02 continuation. Want to just go over to Angela, are we gonna just do a quick read? Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open the public meeting for SD 2202 at 6:47. And we're continuing this from our previous meeting of June 2nd.
Mr. Parker, we do want to open the ex parte.
Absolutely.
Any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No. None.
None.
No.
Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
None.
Any ex parte information?
No.
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 All right. So we will turn it back over to Angela for our staff report.
Um, so I am not gonna go through the whole staff report, I will review the previous application. I'm not gonna go through the whole staff report, so please already review that, if that is okay with the commission.
Yes.
Um, one change which we discovered last meeting, condition of approval number seven will be corrected to say residential load density R1 zone. So that is error on my part between staff reports, so I will update that. And then to review the original application, the applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately 1,993,625 square foot property into 18 lots. The subject property is to the west of 45th Avenue and is identified by 1070 45th Avenue in Lynn County Tax Assessor's map number 13SO1E, 33AC, tax lot 2600. Lots would range in size from 8,000 square feet to 11,697 square feet. All lots would be eligible to be developed with single-family dwellings. Pursuit Home Municipal Code 17.24020A. The subject properties in the residential load density R1 zone. Application SD 22-02 is pending the approvals of application P 22-05, VR 22-02, PLA 22-05, PLA 22-06 applications. Those applications were being filed simultaneously. Application VR 22-02 was approved at the May 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Applications P 2205, PLA 2205 and PLA 2206 were approved on May 20th, 2022 by the KED Director. So in front of you, you were given two new options from the previous one. Option one is the hammerhead layout, it's sheet C 120. This reduces the lot count from 18 lots to 16 lots. And there's a five, five, 50-foot right-of-way width with a 33-foot curb-to-curb width. The hammerhead has a curb-to-curb width of 27 feet. Staff does not recommend the hammerhead style cul-de-sac. The city and the fire district discouraged the use of hammerheads because residents have a tendency to park vehicles at the end, at the day ends. The parking issues make it difficult, if not impossible, for fire apparatus to turn around even when no parking signs are installed. Option two, the bolt cul-de-sac layout exhibits D through I, retains a lot count of 18, has a 45-foot right, 45-feet right-of-way width with 28-foot curb-to-curb width, which complies with the transportation system plan for residential streets. The original site plan called for flag lots, the revised, revised plan calls for joint-use driveways for 12 lots. The same joint-use driveway scenario was presented and approved by the planning commission for the foothills ridge subdivision on July 15th, 2021. The clearwater subdivision goes above and beyond the foothills ridge subdivision by including all four lots in the joint-use driveway instead of just the two rear lots in the foothills ridge subdivision design. Addressing some of the comments from the May 19th meeting, members of the public brought up fencing. The applicant is not required by code to erect a fence. Those concerned about fencing and abutting the subject property can erect their own fence on their side of the property line. We have provided fence permit applications on the back table under the clock in case anyone is interested in that. Stormwater and drainage concerns were brought up during the May 19th meeting. A reminder to the public and to the planning commissioners that stormwater and drainage designs will be reviewed and permitted through the building permit process. The planning department, the engineering department, the building department and the building inspector all reviewed the submitted plans before permitting. Stormwater and drainage should not be considered for approval or denial of the clearwater subdivision application. The width of 45th Avenue was brought up as a concern. The applicant will be required to construct half-street improvements. Staff discussed with the applicant the option of extracting a culvert in the ditch on the west side of 45th. In doing so, they would be able to widen the western side of 45th Avenue right-of-way, including planer strips and sidewalks. The applicant is only required to improve the western side of 45th Avenue along their property boundary, not the eastern side. They are not required to improve 45th Avenue to the south of the property boundary or north of the property boundary to Long Street. On-street parking, parking was brought up in the May 19th meeting. The city of Sweet Home has no on-street parking requirements there, or it should not be consideration for approval or denial of the application. So those are just some general summaries of the differences between them. So if the commissioners have any questions, I'm staff engineer Jill Grayville and myself, Blair here.
Any questions for staff before we bring our applicant up? All right, at this time, I'll invite our applicant to come forward. And just a reminder, if you're wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the reporting. That's good right there, you can cover up part of it. Yeah. We can still see Miss Wood.
Good evening, Lyle Hutchins. On my left, your right, Mark Cordell. And on my right, Mindy Cordell, husband and wife and the owners and developers of the property. Our thanks to staff and Angela specifically for the summary of the additional information that we submitted here over the last four weeks. With respect to the applicant's preferred site plan, which of course is the 18-lot subdivision with the bulb cul-de-sac, this new layout provides specificity with respect to consolidating driveway approaches and maximizing joint-use driveways in accordance with Development Code Section 1708100. This layout also maximizes the availability of on-street parking. As I think I've highlighted on the sheet, there is easily a minimum of 32 parking spaces on-street with this particular layout. And we've allocated some pretty decent distances for each car there. So I think that's a very realistic parking number that could be accommodated on the street. As Angela mentioned, the plan also proposes a half-street improvement to 45th Street across the frontage of property. With this improvement, the total pavement width on 45th Street will be approximately 25 to 27 feet wide, given the variance of the existing county ditch adage on the east side now. And I think with that, we'll stop and be happy to try to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Anybody have any questions for applicant?
Yes, so the way the homes are gonna be situated on those front lots, will they access, will the garage be facing each other or facing the street?
So in the.
To the north of the road.
Yeah.
Yes, so in the northerly sections, the garages on the front-facing lots would be facing the access drive.
Okay.
And then the back lots, if you will, probably the same situation.
Okay.
You know, they would have some flexibility with respect to how they do the driveways and things and, and a lot of layouts.
Okay.
But generally, you know, it would be direct access out of that common driveway for a group of four lots.
Okay.
I do have to say really quick for the record too, I do appreciate the fact that you've come back to us with two different options. We've had people in the past come back to us with the same option that we denied the first time. So thank you for putting in your time and effort.
Well, we worked together to understand what the potential site plans for each lot could be and came to the conclusion that those common accessways, driveways would work well for this particular situation. So able to provide a little more specificity than at the last meeting.
So the cars, are they gonna park this way in front of the nut?
I think there'll still be require, if I'm incorrect, correctly, are you still gonna have the 20-foot setback?
So there would still be a 20-foot setback on the front. The front, front, that faces the road.
Okay.
Our code doesn't require any additional setback for the, for the side.
But we do have a setback to a garage door.
I don't think we do, however, they, they are, each house is required to have two off-street parking spaces. And so there would need to be enough room on that driveway to accommodate two vehicles.
So the parking would not be in that shared driveway, the parking up would be on their lot.
Correct.
So when they back out, they've got the area in between that they can back out into.
Correct. I, my simplified version of it would be that the dimensions for typical off-street parking standards would apply in this situation, shows that the garages, parking areas for each house had sufficient separation to accommodate those backup movements.
Yeah, okay.
So when they officially.
Yeah.
Making sure that their, their ways are big enough. Lodge, that they're stopping with the driveways and that, so that's something.
Yeah.
Submitting.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for applicant at this time? Commissioner Wood, I can't see her, on your message. Oh, she's good. There we go. Got extra screens. All right, well, thank you so much, please stick around, I'm sure you'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll invite the proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of this application to come forward. All right, so this is the portion for opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition of this application. This would be your time to be heard. And once seated, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name's Katie Ventyard. I live at 4309A Long Street. So under chapter 1612, the design standards, the 1612035 easements, it says the city easement shall be at least 20 feet wide. The stormwater collection system shall be 20-foot easements should the easement dimensions be excluded from the lot size. If so, the proposed flag lots probably wouldn't meet the lot dimensions. Also, the stormwater drainage system should be, should include above-ground and below-ground. Their proposal stated they would intercept water on the south side. Their proposal stated they would intercept water on the south side and drain it to the west. How do you plan to drain water uphill? Long Street traffic there goes way too fast as it is. As a pedestrian that exercises by walking on the road with a stroller with two kids in it, with an additional 16 to 18 houses, that's with two cars per house, that's an extra 36 cars in a day and an extra 36 cars out a day. So that's 64 to 72 cars traveling on Long Street and 45th. Can Long Street handle this along with the already added apartments that are down Long Street? With the speed of the traffic that is already going, it's a major concern to me because cars do not get over and there are no sidewalks. And as I was a kid, I remember riding my bicycle and it's like, I know that my kids are not going to be able to do that. As far as the parcel behind, behind me at this point, the fields were supposed to be mowed down by May 25th. It was in the paper and I know that letters were mailed out. This parcel that Cordell owns has not been, and we have started fire season as of yesterday. And that parcel is now four feet plus tall and it's going to be a fire hazard to my property. It's also concerning if Cordell cannot follow this small procedure, how they will handle the stormwater drain to many conjoining neighbors that are so concerned about this, if they can't handle just mowing it. And so it's a major concern to me with everything going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just really quick.
Sorry.
Second, no, you're fine. In regards to your comment on Long Street, I think that might be something that our staff engineer might look at or be able to chime in on. As far as concerned with more traffic flow on Long, that's something maybe later on that you guys could get with.
I mean, to me, there needs to be either sidewalks definitely put in or something. I mean, to me, it can't handle more traffic because people already don't get over. It's not patrolled very well. They put up a speed thing at one point, but nothing's ever done about it. I mean, cars don't get over and I'm concerned about adding, you know, 64 to 72 cars minimum at that. And there's already, I mean, the price of housing at this point is so high that multiple families are living at houses. I mean, so many people have a parent living with them or an uncle living with them or somebody else. So to just say that there's going to be only two cars in one house when you've got, you know, teenagers. I mean, teenagers can't afford to move out nowadays. I mean, I think about, you know, what I made right after I moved out of high school. To me, there's going to be, you know, some of those houses that have three. So to me, I'm looking at, you know, more towards probably 80 cars, you know, going in and out. And I know that there's 47th, 46th, and 45th that all go together. That's going to be a lot of traffic on all those narrow roads.
I, I, this for city council more so.
I invite you actually, since Long Street has nothing to do with this application and we're talking about this application. So I would actually invite you to come to the counter and then we can have a conversation about standards of Long Street.
Well, it's still concerning to me when that development's going in and it's still going on to Long Street. And that's why I'm bringing it up.
I am sympathetic to your traffic concerns on First Avenue, the little shortcut that everybody takes between 20 and 228. I know traffic, so yeah.
And that's why I'm bringing it up. I mean, to me, it's still part of the process and to me, it should still be thought about because it is a major concern. And I know the lady that was here last week, you know, she was very concerned about that amount of cars coming in and out of there with the lights shining into her living room.
I agree.
So that's why, I mean, you're still looking at 60, 62 to 74 cars in and out. I mean, it's concerning.
Yeah, do, do.
And I mean, there's a. I know that there's a field, well, in between 45th and 46th, and they're only putting like three or four houses in there. And so it's like, to me, that's, you know, more manageable and I don't think there would be a fight back if there's a few houses going in versus 16 to 18.
Thank you. Is there any more testimony wishing to speak in opposition of the application?
I would like to remind the public and the audience of people are speaking, so make sure you guys sign up at the, on the back signing sheet so we have work to that. Thank you.
If we have no more opposition testimony, this would be the time for neutral testimony. Not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. All right, so this would be our chance for rebuttal with the applicant. Do we want to go down that road with the turns being trafficked? It's up to you guys.
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Great.
If the commissioners would allow me for a minute. So on exhibit D, it does show the easement, 20-foot easement that is under the property. So it does show the easement somewhere on that exhibit B.
So we do have the easement recorded at 20 feet. Yeah, if you'd like to come back forward, you can. Just for recording purposes, I do need you to state your name and address again.
Katie Vineyard, 4309A Long Street. You see that it's 20 feet, but then it looks to me as if it goes down narrower when you get towards 43rd, like towards lot nine and 10. It looks like it's 20 feet, like lots 17 through 11, but then it gets narrower at lots nine and 10. And that's where all the water's going to be draining. Cause I don't understand how you would drain water uphill.
I think that would be part of the construction and excavation permits where they would have to regrade to create proper drainage. Because they, they cannot put their water onto another person's piece of property.
Well, I sure hope they do because right now they can't even get the field mode and it's over four feet tall.
And that was something I would encourage you to go to the city with as far as code enforcement and, and get that, that dealt with. It does work. I've done it with my name.
I will call code enforcement tomorrow.
Thank you. Hey, so if there's no further testimony from the public, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing for discussion amongst the planning commission at 7:08. Anybody have any commissioners have any concerns, comments, discussion? I'll have to say that in the, the offset, basically offset cul-de-sac, what are we calling this officially? Just an offset cul-de-sac. The bowl out, the bowl. I do like the fact that the consolidated driveways for lots to the north. It should make it feel a little bit more open along the road. I especially like the fact that lots five and four across the street from the joint use driveway kind of creates a big dead space that's getting in and out of the blocks. Just so it doesn't go unnoticed, I do understand what our citizen public speaking about the narrower on the easement, the stormwater going down to 10 feet at lots nine and 10.
Could that be because maybe it's going to accumulate and get as more lots feed into that should be the 20 feet?
Yes, the, the smaller width around that western edge is to, is to collect less of the runoff from the surface runoff. But the, the 20 feet is the full width of the detention basin and water quality controls along there. Plus what comes off the street mid-block to the access utility easements. That's the, the primary drainage area and the storage width that's needed for, to have 20 feet needed for the maintenance of that area.
Okay.
That's the, the critical portion of that dream, that stormwater system.
Do we have any topographical information to show whether we are draining water uphill or not draining water uphill?
That would be a part of the, of the plan review done by the building inspector. Any, anything being built has to show that they're handling their own stormwater that falls on their property. And so it can't, those plans can't be approved unless there are engineers drawings showing how they're going to move stormwater off of their property without impacting somebody else's property. It's, it's simply not going to be approved unless that can be shown with the engineering drawings.
Will this be maintained by the individual property owners?
Yes, subject to the availability of a homeowners association so that they can all take care of it as a group to lessen the maintenance, you know, per person or per group. But yes, it is the responsibility of the owners to maintain that.
Okay, so if they fail to maintain it and it was affecting surrounding properties because they weren't maintaining it, is there a recourse then?
Falls to the code enforcement office.
Yeah, okay.
Community development.
So they would have recourse that some things.
Well, at, at the very least, they'd have a civil.
Right.
Suit, possibility of civil complaint against the other property owner, certainly.
It looks like according to some of the topograph stuff supplied, that there's only a variation of six feet tugable from any one portion of the lot to another of the whole development. From a construction standpoint, it can be, again, pretty easy, but good sized cap.
Are we being asked this evening to choose A or B, hammerhead or bulb or?
So as part of the process, if there's a, any motion to approve this application would need to specify which plan and, and those would be essentially become the conditions of approval for, for the application.
Staff did state that the.
Certainly going back, oh, sorry. Certainly going back to the original map is also part of the application. And if that's desired, that could be done also. It just needs to be specified.
And staff did state that the fire department was not real keen on the hammerhead or has been in the past.
It's one of those things where they are legally, they have to allow it. It's not a desire. It's not something they enjoy having. And I, I will say that from the city perspective, those hammerhead cul-de-sacs that we have in town, we have not had great results from.
As a member of the public dragging a trailer in most places, I don't find it particularly, you know, fun.
And also to remind the commission, depending on whether, what option you pick, when you go to vote on it, if you vote on it tonight, I need you to add in there that the staff report, the decision will be revised to reflect whichever one you choose. So I need to revise it to reflect whichever design you choose. If you choose the original one, I'd ask not to do that. But if you choose none of these new revised versions, I will. So just keep that in mind under.
So the conditions of approval would be revised, is that?
The conditions of approval, I think, should stay the same.
Okay.
Except for the one that I put the residential density, but I think the remainder of them. The only part that may change is the final configuration of proposed lots, the number one. Depending on which one you choose, I may need to change that one. The rest of them, two, street cuts, the city should require applicants connect to all subdivision lots. I can read through these if you want, when you, if you want me to read through them again so we can review it. I can do that.
What do you guys think?
For clarification, it might be best.
Okay, yep. So the first one is the only one that might get changed. That's the original one, so I'll just go down to two from here.
Okay.
So number two is the applicant shall ground down the street cuts for utilities across the pole with the 45th Avenue and repave it in single keys to maintain the integrity of the payment, pavement. Street cut shall be located as close together as practical to minimize disturbance to 45th Avenue. Number three, the city shall require the applicant to connect to all subdivision lots to the newer sewer main, to the new sewer main in the new cul-de-sac and any existing connections to the main on the south side be disconnected. Sweet Home Municipal Code 161204, water system, the design shall be to city standards and shall be approved by the city engineer. The design shall take into account provisions for extensions beyond the subject property. The, the design shall adequately lose the city system. Number five, Sweet Home Municipal Code 1612045, sanitary sewer system. The design shall be to city standards and shall be approved by the city engineer. The design shall take into account capacity and grade to allow for desirable extension beyond the subject property. Number six, upon development of the proposed parcels, the property owner shall construct all applicable street, sidewalk, and storm drain improvements that are required and according to the provisions of the Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. All public improvements must comply with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. Number seven, the new property line shall be situated so that all buildings and structures comply with the yard setback requirements of the residential low density R1 zone. Number eight, improvements within the subdivision shall be installed at the expense of the subdivider as required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.24050. Improvements shall be made under the procedures and specifications listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, chapter 16.24. Number nine, within one year from the date of the approval of the tentative plan, the applicant shall prepare a final plat in compliance with the approved tentative plan, the provisions of this title and the provisions of ORS, chapter 92. The applicant shall submit a final subdivision plat for approval by the city according to the procedures and requirements of Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. The applicant shall provide all information required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. The applicant shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to public works permits, development permits, including building permits and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a 1200C stormwater permit from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and any Department of State lands permits as applicable.
Thank you. Do any of our commissioners have any further questions?
With regard to the storm drain, and I do appreciate your comments on that and your concerns, and that definitely would be a concern of mine too. And I wish that we would be able to look forward and look in the future and know for sure if that would work or not. But we do have standards in place that say that this design should work. And if not, there is recourse. And I know that doesn't sound like a good plan or a good route to go and nobody has time or anything for that. But I do believe city staff does a good job reviewing applications and making sure that these standards are met. So, you know, I feel like they are, they have addressed our concerns that we brought up at the last time they were here.
Well, I, I appreciate the improvements, the changes that have been made. And I would just reiterate what we've already talked about, that there are engineering.
Don't be shut it off.
Okay, there are engineering standards that will be met and it's pretty, we're not the engineering department. So with that said, I think this is looking good.
If there are no further, if you have anything.
On the fencing, did, did they say there was not going to be fencing or did I miss that?
They are not required to do fencing, so they're not, it's not a requirement in our code that they have to be fencing along there. So if any of the neighbors that are abutting that would like to do fencing, they can, but the, the, the applicants are not required to do it. It's not a requirement of the subdivision application.
During construction, of course, the, you know, when it comes to silt and, and erosion control, things like that, there are things that are required during construction, certainly, to keep from having any kind of impact on neighboring properties and on the street. During construction, certainly, to keep from having any kind of impact on neighboring properties and on the street. So there's, there certainly would be temporary measures taken during construction.
I did drive out there this evening before I came here, um, I, one of my concerns was the traffic that would be impacting, um, the street. And, um, it, my concern at the last meeting was that. Two cars wouldn't be able to pass by, and when I was there, I was parked on the street and a car did go by me. And there was plenty of room, um, for both of us to pass in opposite directions. If there were a pedestrian there. It might be a little more difficult, but there was room on the hard surface for two cars to pass easily.
And we do have in our, in our plans as part of this development, they would improve at least the west side.
Half-street improvement.
So they would include sidewalks.
Yeah. Which will add to the neighborhood, the safety, just as this subdivision is impacting it, so.
We can only hope that neighbors.
The rest of the neighbors will pick up on it.
They're strong.
I would be ready to make a motion, so kind of bear with me here. So I would move to approve application S D twenty-two dash zero two. Including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report as modified. Section. One. Would be. Attachment D, Exhibit D for the plan. And number seven, the zoning corrected to the R-one zone. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of the twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision. And hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I would second the motion.
Just to clarify, you're, um, you're approving the bulk cul-de-sac.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, since we are not on the same room, we'll, we'll call vote.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Meltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfius?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Yes.
If she passes, six, one upset.
Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.
Thank you. I would encourage you guys, as welcoming you to Sweet Home, to be a good neighbor. You've heard the concerns.
We do, we, we've done lots of storm drains, we're not losing this.
This ain't your first rodeo.
We forgot a letter. We didn't see the notice.
In, in your defense, we've been a little bit hesitant to give people a hard time about tall grass and weeds this particular year, given. That it decides to rain every weekend and the only sun we get is on a Wednesday, it seems.
Yeah.
Because most, most cities usually if it's over twelve inches or so.
Yeah, I think we're.
It needs to be mowed, so, you know.
Yeah, my backyard is eighteen last night.
Well, we wouldn't want you to lose a tractor or anything in the mud, because it's, it's wet.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for, uh, coming down.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
With, uh, behind us. Go to staff or update.
Uh, do we have any?
Just saying no.
She's busy.
What you want to know? Um, yes, we are continuing to be extremely busy with multiple different facets. You will have in July, you will have a variance application coming your way. We will have probably another housing needs analysis meeting fairly soon, uh, having to work on a map, um, because. Vacant lands map needed to be updated, so I am working through that, um, slowly, but I am working through that, trying to figure out which ones are not vacant anymore. Um, and then, um, we spoke to Walt, Walt is putting in the changes that we made when we went through this last code review. He will be making the changes and as soon as he gets that done, you're noticing it for.
Second meeting in July.
Second meeting in July to do a public notice.
Public hearing.
Public hearing for.
Wow.
So we will be seeing that, so that will happen in July. Applications are still coming in.
Any more news on the food court, because I'm getting hungry.
We, we don't have any applications.
We are waiting for final, uh, plans from the owner, um, there's also, you know, S T Cs, there's utility stuff, so literally.
Despite a letter to the editor this week, the city is not holding up anything.
Yes.
When it comes to.
Many people.
And I.
I've, I've confirmed that we've never seen anything.
Yeah, and I, I talked to the person who wrote the letter to the editor today and, and reminded her that. And, and she agreed, yep, it's not the city holding anything up, uh, Pacific Power apparently is, is the holdup of.
So we'll see a retraction.
I doubt it.
So real quick too, I, I wanted to thank all you guys for, for tonight, the way that it's gone, I. Time and time again, we see the public complaining about pedestrian, you know, safety and all this stuff and requiring the sidewalks, yet. Many of these folks that properties about Long Street.
Yeah.
Are not voluntarily putting in sidewalks in front of their lots.
Right.
So they want someone else to do it for them.
Yep.
And our applicant is doing it for themselves.
Yep.
So. I know it's a hard one, I know what traffic's like.
It's an issue on Long Street, I mean, we, we have people all the time, it's like, well, how come we can't widen it, it's like, well, you know, this was put in a long time ago, but any new development, that's something that we address.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the right of way is wide enough, it's just that if you want to pave that whole thing. You're going to have to put in a lot of storm drain infrastructure, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of curbing, it's not going to be cheap.
It's one of those poor things that takes a long time and we look like a patchwork quilt. I mean, the prime example is that one stretch of sidewalk on Eighteenth before Mountain View that starts nowhere and goes nowhere.
Yeah.
But it was part of the building permit.
And, and a lot of times developers.
I walk in that occasionally.
Do you?
Yeah, I do.
If anybody ever used it.
It's, it's frustrating.
Every once in a while.
Hate doing that because they're like, but I got, it's got nowhere to connect to and all, and all you can say is eventually.
Yeah.
It will connect, eventually other things will develop and it'll get put in.
And had, had. Kind of our predecessors stuck to their guns a little bit more, we probably would see a lot more of them.
When I was in, when I was in Stanfield, we actually started a program to do a sidewalk grant. Where if you decided to put sidewalks in front of your house, according to city spec, then the city would pay half. To get it done.
Wow, that would be an interesting.
We didn't get very many takers, unfortunately.
And our transportation system plan is sorely outdated, isn't it?
It's in the process, well, hopefully it gets started soon, if they would just hurry up and do it.
And just so you know, a lot of the developments that have come our way that don't have sidewalks, we have an actual development agreement. That they have to sign that if and when sidewalks and all of that gets triggered, then they have to do it at that point.
Yeah.
So there are development agreements that are through our department that are in there, so once that gets triggered, they will have to go back and do that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's there, it's just when that gets triggered and when it gets.
I kind of wish we had what you said, that the city would pay part, because that would be more family friendly, that if somebody was selling that house and somebody buying it with a bunch of kids. The parents would feel a little bit more comfortable that they have some sidewalk without them having to play out in the road.
Yep.
You know, and, and I think would also increase the value of the property.
You some kind of money for that? It's an idea, I haven't thought about that one for a while, I'll have to bring it up with.
But what do you want to bet, no one will take advantage of it?
You know, I mean. It's hard, yeah, it's hard, but, uh, but at least you could say we're trying.
We're trying.
And we're doing something.
Yeah.
It's something that the city is doing to step in the right direction.
So if we had a stretch of property. And you have. Agreements. To put in when it's indicated sidewalks and curbs. And let's say we get to the point where you've got a majority in that stretch of property. Would the city initiate a limited improvement district?
There's, there should be a trigger at some point where that an L I D would be, would be the method for that to be done, and, um, and so. Yeah, I think that, I think it would be, it would probably need to fall on the city to be the instigator of that. And say, okay, now's the time.
But what we experienced is that the city usually doesn't instigate.
Right, but on the other hand, we have seen lately some property owners coming forward saying, I want this. And that, and that eventually, you know, that hopefully would trigger the city to actually do it.
So would another trigger be, say, an abutting property putting in a sidewalk, would that trigger them to have to go back and do it?
It, I'd have to take a look at the agreements and see. I, I don't, I haven't looked at them exhaustively to, to know exactly how it's going to work, but.
Is your, your city fifty-fifty split on that, Mike?
If we did a fifty-fifty split, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. If, if that were an option.
Sure.
Sounds like an amazing thing, but.
It would be, i- if we had the funding, it would be great, this was in a much smaller town and, and we had a limit, it was, you know, funding, as funding was available, we, we did it, but.
I'm sure there's some federal grant out there for pedestrian safety.
Uh, there, there are, it's just, they're really hard to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we are working on an applicant, application right now for Safe House School, that would be pretty massive if we get.
Yeah, it is.
We do, Mr. Chairman, have. A standard for sidewalk construction with new development that happens adjacent to an existing sidewalk segment. That portion, the new portion is then extended, and so incrementally, if there's room for that, incrementally. There is the lengthening of the sidewalk network. But, um. Otherwise, as a piecemeal checkerboard, you know, configuration that's more difficult, takes a longer time, big project, but. At least if there's some existing sidewalk and something comes in next to it. Like, for example, the one over on Ames Creek Road there, you know, great court, great loop. Then that too is extended. And there are a couple of properties right there on that one segment that could easily link the sidewalk network around the corner to Great Loop.
Yeah, and, and like you said, it's going to take time.
Yes, it takes time.
Are these agreements recorded with the county so that when there is a transfer in ownership, the new owner? Knows that this is imposed on his property, or is it just with the current owner at that time?
No, it is a recorded document at Albany, Lynn County Deeds and Records.
Okay.
And, um, it follows, the agreement follows the land, the property.
Yeah.
Regardless who the owner is.
Okay, good. Yep.
Yeah, so if you have a block segment with one person that wants to start it. And the other people and a majority of them have long since already signed one. Can happen.
All right, so if we have nothing else in upcoming and updates. Code reviews behind us for now.
Until the public hearing in July.
Yeah.
And then you'll actually vote on it. Well, we don't have to read the whole thing for that one, you're not reading the whole thing, city council has to do that.
Well, the, he said he will prepare the staff report, so he will be able to kind of walk through it.
Yes, with that, we will adjourn the planning commission meeting for June sixteenth at seven thirty-four.
Good job, guys.
All right. Good night, guys, sorry I couldn't be there, good to see you on the little screen.